What is probably our 12th or 13th budget meeting for this year. This one's a little different tonight. We've been discussing the budget really since the beginning of the year and some parts of the budget really since last year as well. Tonight, we do have presentations for the city schools budget, which we'll have up here in just a minute. Thank you, Dr. Joyce, for being here. We appreciate that. And to members of the school board. And then we have our city budget presentation. We will then move on to our public hearings where we'll talk about the tax rate, the fees, and the rates, and then the fiscal 2025-26 budget. Just a couple of things, and I'll get to more detail as we get down to the public hearings. How did we get to this point? Well, we always have to have a budget for every year. It has to be a balanced budget. It has to be a budget that will work to meet the needs of the city. We made a transition at the end of 2024 into 2025 with a new interim city manager. Mr. Meadows came on board. And as part of our process of going through and preparing for the budget season, Mr. Meadows and staff and department heads and really most folks in the city spent a lot of time going through last year's budget and looking at where we were and what's going on and where things are. We knew we had some challenges. We thought primarily things were essentially related to cash flow. It has turned out that things are a little more involved than that and that some of our revenue projections were not ones that we could necessarily meet. So one of the big things we had to do in this year's budget was to get those revenue projections to a realistic number that we thought would make a lot more sense when we're at this point next year as we work through a budget season. And to do that, we've had to look at savings throughout the budget. And really, no area has been spared simply because we couldn't. We had to find several million dollars to figure out where we are, what we're doing, and how we can move forward. This council, and I'm so thankful for all the people up here, has worked really hard to try to work with staff to figure out exactly where we are and where we need to go. And working together, we'll all get through it. So setting the tone for that, I will ask everybody in the audience, you're going to hear things tonight you probably love, you're going to hear things you probably hate. We'll ask that everybody maintain decorum if they would. When we have the public hearing time, we'll talk about that process. But we do have a little manila list, a legal pad. If you'll be sure to sign up on that so that you can let us know that you're planning to speak, and we can work through that. And we'll tell you more about the public hearing when we get to that point. But at this time, Adam, we'll ask you if you'll take the podium and present the school city, the city schools budget for 2526.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. City Council, thank you for the time that you've allotted me tonight to present our budget. I appreciate it very much. As a former teacher of civics, I appreciate the process. So thank you very much. Let's dive right in. The budget process, much like the mayor mentioned, has been a long process for the school system. We had our first public hearing in December of 2024. We've held department and director meetings along the way to find out what it is they needed versus what they wanted. We conducted principal meetings to find out at the school level what it is they wanted versus what they needed. Multiple meetings with our school board budget committee, that's Mr. Calfey and Ms. Boyd. I appreciate their input more than you know. Also, the remaining board members, Ms. Swin, Ms. Winter, Mr. Dobbins, were very influential and helpful with the process. So I appreciate the board's support. We met with the Virginia Education Association president, Ms. Mouchay, to see what angle those folks might bring to the table, as well as consulted a couple of times with, many times with Mr. Meadows, and also met with the mayor. So it's, it is a process that we appreciate, and it's, it's, it's a process for a reason. So a lot's been made of the, the LCI, which is the way the state decides the locality's ability to pay for public education. Radford's LCI is .1658, which means that the city of Radford is able to pay for about 16% of the K-12 education in the city of Radford versus 84% would come from the state. And that's all in an, in an effort to, to keep the state average about 55-45. Here are the three, and I'll show you about that in just a minute. Here are the three components that go into the LCI. The local composite index is made up of the true value of real estate, the adjusted gross income, and the taxable retail sales. So that's where we start. When the count tool is released to Ms. Long, who, shame on me, I failed to mention how influential she was. I mean, she probably should be standing here, quite frankly. But when the count tool is released, you know, there's one for the House version of the budget, there's one for the Senate version of the budget, there's one sitting on the, not the mayor's desk, the governor's desk, that has to be addressed by May 2nd. So we, we practice shooting in the middle and hoping that we land approximately where we need to be. Right now, we're using numbers from the governor's budget that the one's sitting on his desk. Again, Radford City Schools has realized an increase in state funding based on a lower LCI. In the biennium that was 2224, the LCI for the city of Radford was, or for Radford City Schools was .2395. It has dropped, which means the city is able to pay for less of public education than it was the two years prior. I will say that .1658 is among the lowest calculations of LCI in the state. Radford is able to pay for approximately 16% of its budget. Virginia covers the balance, so that an overall statewide local share is 45%, and the statewide share is 55%. So if you took them all and threw them in a bucket and took out the mean, that would be 45 and 55. So our funds are spread out like this. The textbook fund, and I don't want to read all these numbers to you, but we have Fund Zero textbooks, our school board operating fund, that's the meat and potatoes, that is Fund One. School nutrition fund mainly sort of takes care of itself. The grants fund also takes care of itself minus some, some in-kind or buy-in amounts in order to get the grant. Health insurance fund, I call it a holding tank. That's where our folks pay in and then claims are paid out. Capital projects fund, that's 220 of the, of the amount of the capital reserve fund that the city is nice enough to let us carry over year after year. So we go ahead and budget for the 220 so that the first $220,000, we're not coming down here to ask you guys for the money from that reserve fund. We go ahead and include it in our budget so that we're not here knocking on your door day after day for issues with facilities. Region seven virtual academy fund, that is not related to our relationship with the city, nor is the Southwest Virginia Governor's School. Those, we are fiscal agents for those folks. So that's their money, but we take care of it. So the projected state funds based on a projected student enrollment of 3010, we'll, we'll look in just a minute at the worksheet that, that Mr. Meadows and I have been looking at. It's a little higher. The state projects our enrollment to be a bit higher at 3089. But right now, we're working this budget on 3010. That is 1525 residential and 1485, the kids that we served on a virtual platform. City funds from last year, level. We're asking for 5.8 plus or minus this year. That is level funding for not only last year, but in previous years as well, if you'll go back and look. Local funds that are coming into the school system on our own that we generate equal about 990, that is student tuitions, facilities use, case stride admin funds, things like that, for a total budget of 41652203. And I won't ask for questions, but you are welcome to stop me. So Mr. Meadows and I, and Mayor Horton, Carrie Long, and the members of the school board budget committee met last week. They asked for some ways to find out what the LCI meant to the city of Radford. This is the worksheet that can be found on the VDOE's website. As you see circled up top, that is required local effort. That is the 1658 that the state believes the city can pay. And what this gets you is the bare minimum. Okay? That is what is required by law. Many divisions ask for much more than their required local effort. Some divisions are right there, you know, bare bones. Now, what we haven't talked about much is the local required match. This term refers to specific funds that governments must contribute to participate in state-funded programs, like the at-risk add-on to our budget. That includes the all-in funding, which is your attendance coordinator, your after-school tutoring, your Virginia Literacy Act, the things you may have heard about in the news. The 3% pay increase for staff that's proposed in the state's budget, we have to buy into that. We have to put up $281,000 to get 1.4 million to pay our standards of quality staff. Okay? Standards of quality are the folks that the state believes are required to run an effective school division. Those, a lot of the positions that we, we pay are not included in SOQ. So I'm getting a little hit on myself, but as a school division, we would like to pay everyone a 3% raise if we can, but the city, the state is offering 3% to the SOQ positions. Okay? So again, that's one of the buy-ins that we would have to, as a local required match, that's a buy-in, that we would have to front some money and get a lot more money back.
Can we pause for just one second on this? So for years, we've been talking about local required effort. At no time, and correct me if I'm wrong, had we gotten to this local required match. Because the, the reason I was so struggling with the LCI earlier this year, and you and I talked about it a lot, was trying to figure out what's the multiplier to multiply out, okay, we're, you know, .165, what does that mean? You know, what, what does that multiply out to? I think this feels like different information from what we had talked about for many years about what our local required effort would be, because we never could get a handle on whether that was 6 million, or 5 million, or somewhere in between and go from there. And I know we had those discussions, again, this time last year, trying to figure out exactly what that was and to address that. So I know we're going to want to come back to talk about this more. Guy, did you have something you wanted to ask? Would you turn your mic on?
Sorry. So we had on the previous slide, the 5.3?
Yes, sir.
So these, these are additional dollars that would go on top of the 5.3s.
Right. And so, so we're, that's a kind of sneak into why we were asking for more than the local required effort. Because with the local required match, if we don't put the buy-in, I'm calling it a buy-in, you got to commit. If we don't put the buy-in up, we leave millions, frankly, on the table. And so we'll talk about that in just a moment. It also includes the preschool program, 16 four-year-old, 16 four-year-old kids in a classroom, 16 three-year-old kids in classroom. So that program would go away without our local buy-in, including the, the staff that it takes to run it. Class size reduction, we like to stay, the state of Virginia wants us to stay around, and this is for kindergarten through third grade, the state of Virginia wants us to stay around 18 to 23 kids. If we do not participate in the class size reduction, then it can balloon up to 28, 29, or 30 kids per classroom in K-3. And nobody wants that. Additional special ed funding is also tied to some buy-in funding. Okay? And I have, I have a spreadsheet I'll share in just a, in just a moment. So, I'm sorry, this is hard to read. It's small, it's very text-heavy. But I've circled, so on the, on the very first column, you'll see small arrows. Okay? Those small arrows, I'm not, I'm not even going to try the pointer, but those small arrows are already covered in the local required effort. So everything that you see here is covered in the LRE. Okay?
Yeah.
The circles that I have around special education add-on, the first column is what the state will give us if we put in this amount. So what you see there is the special education add-on, the at-risk funding that comes from lottery sales, and that's split funding. There'll be page two with more at-risk funding. The compensation supplement, that's the 3% raise that the state would like for us to offer. We put in 281 for our SOQ positions. Okay? Yes, sir.
I do have one question. For, for, if you get back to the 5.3 figure, can any of that amount be applied towards these buy-in figures to be able to still get that?
Right, no.
Okay. So, so none of that, it has to be separate from the?
If it doesn't have this small arrow, it's above and beyond.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And at the bottom, you see some technology that goes towards our IT folks to help upgrade technology. The next page is, again, there's the, the at-risk split funding that the lottery provides. There's the K-3 primary class size reduction that I spoke about. We buy in 51,000, we get back 260. Infrastructure issues, that's a very nice number. 208 gets us over a million dollars. And then there's the three and four-year-old pre-K, pre-K program, very small buy-in on our part, nets is 133. Okay? So I know that was a lot, and I'm happy to address anything that you see here.
So we've gone from the 5.3 to 6.6?
No, don't, that, I'd rather you not pay attention to that number. I'm sorry, that's a number, that number, that's not any of my numbers.
Okay.
Right.
So what have we gone to from 5.3 to?
Well, our, our original request, 5.8 plus or minus.
Okay.
So our buy-in funding would equal 1.3 million. That would net us 6.9 million. So whatever we don't fund in the local required match section stays with the state, and we're not able to offer that. So I would then, with the board's help, have to prioritize which one of the programs we were allowed to keep and which ones would have to go away. And quite frankly, that won't be an easy discussion with anybody. And I'm happy to answer questions.
Let's go through the rest of your presentation. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of questions, but a lot of it is probably going to be stuff we have to go back to.
Okay, well, that was it.
Oh, okay. Well, I do appreciate that. So one of the big pieces when trying to figure out what the local required effort was, was the ADM, that, that number of students. Can you talk a little bit about how that's calculated and who all is included in that?
Well, the state sends us a projection of what they think our, our, so the ADM's collected on the 31st of March, but that's an average daily membership. We don't count the kids that are in school that day and, and call it the ADM. The kids that are in school that day is when, that day is when we count it. Okay? So we go back and look at the, all the months before in this school year, and we figure out what the average daily membership looks like. And right now, we are up. We've had a lot of folks move into our school division, not necessarily into the city, but a lot of them have. So our numbers are up a bit. The state, that's why the state ticked it up, but Ms. Long and I decided to stay with a conservative number at 3010. The state is at 3089.
So the 3089, is that only physical bodies that are in Radford City Schools, or what all does that include?
So that's the physical bodies that are in Radford City Schools. Those kids may live in the city, those kids may live in Montgomery County, those kids may live in Pulaski County. That also includes any kids that live in the city of Radford who are on a virtual. That's the next-to-the-last fund that said region seven virtual academy.
Right.
Those are kids in the city of Radford that elect to stay virtual. The last number is the virtual academy statewide where we serve those kids that don't, that don't have a, we're, we're the home school for those kids because they decided to go virtual in any part of the state. So we serve those as well.
So with the tuition and all of our virtual students, do we know what total that the school brings in from that every year?
Yes, it's, that number was 990 local fund, and I can just flip right quick, which it looks like we may just, we'll stay on that page for a little bit. That's the local funds.
And that's the, that's the total of all monies that are collected from tuition and virtual Virginia and everything along that line?
That's use of facilities, and I'll forget the rest. A lot of them are nickel and dime, but it's kids that are on the, that we serve from the stride community and mostly, mostly the tuition from students.
So that money, how is it applied toward the budget? Is it used throughout the general budget, or can that be applied as part of the local effort for the local match?
No, sir.
Why can't it?
Well, it's just law, that it can't, the money that we generate is not allowed to go towards what the locality must provide. And that's a very fair question.
Well, I guess the reason I'm asking is, so this, again, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is the first we've heard of, we have to have a local match above local required effort for all of those things.
Well, so frankly, we've never been told that we were just getting LRE. And, and the 600,000 that's the difference would have been where we applied, we would apply those funds to the matches.
Right.
So, you know, if I'm here, if I'm here to defend the local required effort, you know, if I'm here to defend my number, we've never had to do that before.
Well, I think it's more of us understanding what that number is, because this year in particular, we've tried to get our budget to a place that is
I understand that.
sustainable. And looking at that has been the challenge. And I don't want to dominate this conversation, so certainly, Guy, did you have another question you wanted to ask?
So I'm hearing you say, I think, that the council has always given you enough money to cover that, so you've never had to come and try to justify you need, need more.
Right. Anybody else have any questions?
There we go. I really, I don't have any questions. And, you know, I understand when you're talking about having to have tough conversations with your teams.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
You can look around this room, and if you see these city employees, they've all already had those conversations.
Yes, ma'am.
So just so you know, we, we know what those look like, because we're sitting on the other side of the desk on those, and they are very difficult, but we have had to have them.
And that's not lost on the school division, which is why we offered, you know, $500,000 from the capital reserve fund, if we could hang on to some and not, and not deplete it, yet, you know, slide some into the city budget. And I don't pretend to know how that works, but the board agreed that that would be a nice gesture on our part, that, that we would offer, I don't even know if that's the right word. I mean, the money's in your account, but we decided that if you wanted to use that and it goes away, then that was the least we could do.
Did you want to touch on that, Craig? I know, like, how that impacts our budget? Is it included in that, or is that above and beyond it?
Well, as the superintendent mentioned, that, that's funds that the city currently has in its account that are reserved on behalf of the schools. My question would be, if that were to be accepted, can that 500,000 be applied towards the 600,000 shortfall?
Well, that was, well, if, if, if I give you the money, I hate to say it like that, if I give Craig the money, I suppose, and I'm no expert, I suppose that's your money to do what you want to do with it.
Yeah, I, I, you know, as
Is that the way you understand?
Well, and that's what I'm trying to figure out is, because one of the concerns I had with, with some of the circled numbers is when you add up all the circled numbers, they're way more than the reduction in the, in the budget.
Right. And in that spirit, in the spirit that Ms. Foster spoke about, making some tough cuts and having some soul-searching moments?
Right.
We're prepared to do that. We have to be.
Right.
So in, instead of coming up and asking for a million dollars, quite frankly, we decided, we're in this together. And, and if we need to bend and not break, so you guys can bend and not break, that's what we're going to do.
I think that's something that we need to have some further discussion on. If there's opportunities with the capital reserve fund, or if there's any opportunities with year-end carryover money, if there's anything that we can cobble together to help the school division get that funding to make those matches.
And, and quite frankly, those conversations with about the 3% raise scares me a bit in that we will certainly lose staff and all that goes with that. We will lose the at-risk funding, which is a lot of our after-school tutoring, our reading specialists, our Virginia Literacy Act, our attendance coordinator, all those things are funded through that at-risk split funding. You know, if class sizes were to increase, no one likes that. It bothers me that any changes that you guys make to your budget or to our budget, it's hard, it's hard to go back. And we can't, that's a slippery slope for a school division, because as you know, that's one of the first things listed when someone's looking for a place to live, is how well the schools are doing. And I think just as much as you, we don't, we don't want to, this division has always been the North Star for Southwest Virginia, and I know that I don't speak alone. And we just need to do whatever it takes to keep us that way.
To Jesse's point, we are making these very difficult decisions. You say that you are having a lot of difficulty with not being able to possibly give your staff raises, and that will cause them to leave. We're looking at the same thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Our staff didn't get raises last year like yours did. Every single person, I think, in the city, in the school system got a raise, because you guys did that in your budget, because you could. We can't do that.
Yes, ma'am.
And they're not going to get one this year. And we're going to be losing police officers. We're going to be losing people that keep the electricity on.
Sure.
That keep the water running. Those people are just as important as the people in the school system, and we're having to make very difficult changes, just like you.
I hope that you didn't take what I said to mean that we were
I'm not. I just want to reiterate again to everyone in here that it's not just the school that's not being able to give their people raises, it's us too. We're, we're making those tough decisions, just like you. And I would love to be able to give you every single dime that you want.
I know you would.
But I'm not sure that we can do that. It is not because we don't think that you're important, or the school isn't important, or that things aren't going to slide down a slippery slope. It's because we, in my opinion, physically can't right now, as much as we want to.
Sure.
And I want to say, and I think, you know, when you're talking about our demographic, obviously, I sit on the school board side of things. And so I certainly know the challenges in education today, just in a broader scope of things. And I know our particular community, we have our own struggles specific to us. And so what's on the other side of this for us, as you, I know you're familiar with our tax rates, they're extremely low. They're extremely low for the region. And a part of that is trying to address some of the things that you're talking about, the demographics. It's very difficult. We are right now having trouble with folks trying to keep their utilities on, and that, that's not a profit for us. That's, that is because energy level's gone up 29%, you know, in two years. Insurance for our employees, 30%. And we can't tax the rate to make up for that on our citizens, because they are so financially challenged and having trouble getting bread. So it just makes this very difficult, because no one wants to pay more taxes, but no one wants to give much up. And we are giving up a lot of matches, even locally. There's a lot of grants that we have opportunities, because the one thing about our demographics is it does make us eligible for grants, but we're just, we're not putting forth that, the additional funds right now, because we're circling our wagons, because we don't want to raise taxes, to, to even, honestly, with the rate of inflation, we're just struggling to even tax to even close to that. And so it, we, we have a lot of tough decisions, and we are asking everyone in our household to tighten their belts. And so I think, I think what's challenging for us is that what you're saying out loud that you may have to do and don't want to do, we're looking around this room, and we've already done it to them. And so it's not falling on deaf ears, because we know how you feel.
True.
But so do they, and they're hearing you say all that, and they know what they're giving up. And that's hard. That's really hard for us. So I want So, I want to do all the things, but all the things cost, and half of the people that come to talk to us will say, whatever you do, you know, don't take this, this is so important. The other half come and say, please don't raise our taxes because we're having trouble paying utilities and going to the grocery store. And we are not magicians. We can only disperse what we bring in. And so, that, that is the challenge. And we're not making it rain because there's no rain, there's no water. So you look at the tax rates, they're low and they've been kept low for a reason, because we understand the demographics and the financial hardships. So, it's very challenging for you, I know, and I appreciate all that you're doing and the budget and the compromises that you're making, and, you know, I guess I'm, I'm just telling you that, you know, everyone is tightening their belts and it's uncomfortable right now.
I understand.
I'll tie in, throughout this whole budget process, this hasn't been about a philosophical debate, it's a dollar and cents debate. There's, there's nothing that we've even, on the city side or potentially the school side, looked at that isn't valued. I mean, you, you'll never convince me there's not a better investment we can make than in our children and in the future. And I have two little kids that are about to be in your hands, and, and I want you to have the tools to give them the education that I had. I mean, I, I, my, I was blessed, I think several of us were, to come through this school system, and it is one of the key assets that this city has to offer.
Without a doubt.
And, you know, I, I will fight for every day that I am fortunate enough to sit back here to give you that. But, you know, right now, I, I also, we're running the risk of our kids competing with assets for our other, in another locality as a county against other schools. And I don't think that the long term, that that's what's best for our kids either. So getting Radford in a sustainable, healthy place as a city is going to pay dividends for our school system. Right now, look, I'm sorry we're having these conversations, I, I hate that we are, I, I truly do, that, I value everything that you guys do for our children and will do for our children, and every single person up here does. To me, again, we'll figure out how to get there, it's not a philosophical question, it's dollars and cents so that long-term, we can be sustainable, we can provide for you, provide for the city. It's, we're, we're in a real, real tough spot right here, but I just want you to know that that's where, that's where I'm coming at from this. This has nothing to do with the, the value that you guys provide. It's, it's, it's the best, one of the best investments that we make with our dollars is, is what you guys provide for our children. So I did want to share that and just my perspective on trying to get out of this, knowing that there's no easy answers, and we're asking a lot of tough things of, of our staff. We've cut a lot of things with more things on the table to try to get us to a better place. So I, I just wanted to make sure that that, this is, that's where we're coming from, and we do value you, and everything that every single one of these programs brings is, is an asset to the city, so.
Understand, thank you.
More questions?
Okay.
I'm, I'm new up here, it's been 30 years, so I'm a little rusty on a lot of these numbers and things. But can you go then through, through all of these circled items, and you could decide to take out social education and not take that money, but take all the other money from the state?
Well, I guess that depends on, it depends on how much money I have to work with. So if, if I'm offered, if I'm offered the local required effort from the city, then I don't have any money to work with any of these programs.
Well, no, I guess what I'm trying to say is, if you could say, well, we'll take out 270, or, if we take out, don't give you that 53, but we're giving you all the others, then you could do without 271 in that, that's, that's the way it works?
I would, right.
Okay.
So, so whatever money that is, is provided to the school division from the city, that's the money we have to work with as far as buying for some of these
Okay, so you'd go through that list and prioritize?
I've already started going through that list.
Okay. I, I'm kind of thinking, I'm sorry.
I said it's not an all or nothing.
Okay.
No, ma'am, you're right.
It's a piece of
So, you know, I'm really feeling like we, we need to cut some more money. So I guess I'm saying to you and the, the board, if y'all could go through all of those and find us a little more money by cutting out whatever you think you can
Well, well, what it would be now, with all due respect, would be adding back. I, none of these are on the table for me right now, none of these. Because at the local required effort at 5.3, I have no money.
Well
So I would be putting back.
I'm asking you to assume we're going to give you
Okay.
What you need and go through and cut out.
Right.
Now, you're going the opposite, opposite way.
I don't mean to be contrary.
No, that's okay, that's okay, I just want to be sure we were
So, yeah, so, sure, I've already started prioritizing this list over the weekend. The board, I'm, I'm looking forward to bringing back the budget committee and having the board help me put back anything that you guys see fit to fund, okay? We're, we're not exactly line item funding, but if you were to give me X amount of dollars, how could I squeeze everything on this list into that X amount of dollars?
Okay.
Okay.
Time frame.
Well, let's, let's talk for just a second, because there's a lot here. And I think we're all feeling like we're drinking from the fire hose a little bit, trying to process it all. Let's go back to the reserves because that money has been a local piece from the city for years, and, and you all graciously said, well, what if we did give you $500,000 back and go from there? We're already budgeting you at 5.4 and some change in our budget, so we're above the 5.3. If the local reserves, and, and there's got to be more conversation here because we don't know exactly if that's going to make sense, that added to the additional that we've already said we can do, the 5.4, so it's 100,000 above, it feels like we're actually not as far away from this as we might think we are, but that's contingent on a number of things. Can we make that happen? And so I think we're going to need to probably let some numbers be crunched and see what that sounds like, and see what it looks like, and see if any or all of these things can be managed under the local match piece. But I will say this, one of the big challenges is, this is a this-year problem for sure because we've got to get everything righted. But it may be a next-year problem and a year-after problem because we're trying to get things on an upward trajectory. But when you're talking 600,000, a million, 2 million, 3 million, that's very hard for Radford to suddenly boom, make happen. So even if we're able to solve something for this year, it doesn't mean the problem is totally taken care of.
Right.
And, and so that's the piece, we're, we're trying a huge course correction for this year to get us in a place where we can be more level and sustainable. If we have, the more things we have to do that are not part of that built-in revenue already will mean, if we come back to this, this point next year, and, and this is for all the citizens to hear too, the 600,000 represents about five cents on the real estate tax as it stands now. So that piece would have to be something that's a community conversation. Ultimately, that whatever revenue we have to do to get to a little bit higher point, it may have to be, again, five or six cents higher to even make that happen. And I'm, I'm not trying to lecture anybody or anything like that, but just trying to put it all into perspective of even if we can figure it out for right now, we don't want to give anybody the thought that boom, problem solved, this wasn't a big issue. This is like pulling teeth as we go through all of this, trying to figure out exactly what we can do and how we can do it and get to a place where the city is not going to be at risk for a number of things, just like we don't want the schools to be at risk, because if we don't have a healthy, healthy Radford, we won't have a healthy Radford City Public Schools and vice versa, and we recognize that. So I think we need to take some time on this before we can finalize everything. So whatever happens tonight budget-wise does not mean that's the end of the story. The way this process works is we have to go through a first reading of the budget, we have our public hearing, we go through a first reading of the budget. That's kind of where we are for reading one. A week from now, we have to do a reading two, and that's where additional changes can be made as needed. That's going to be scramble time as we try to figure out, does this make sense? We do have some council members, Guy mentioned it, he'd like to see more cuts so that we can be even stronger, robustly financially for the future with our, our, our budget. You know, we, we cannot go higher on the rates than we've advertised, we had that discussion as well. The rates and fees that have been advertised, that's it for right now. There's something further down the road we can look at, but for right now, that's where we are. And I'm not even sure everybody's right there yet, and so that's part of the discussion we have to have. So, long story short, thank you, and thank you to the school board. Everybody's trying to work together to see, is there a pathway where we can figure all of this out? And nobody wants it figured out more than the five people sitting up here. Because this entire process, looking at the things we value and love about this city and putting a dollar on it and saying we can do without that, is so incredibly impossible because we recognize that every single thing has a value to someone, and that we have to work together to try to minimize the downside of that, but also to minimize the challenge of all the fees and the revenue and the taxes and everything along that line. So that said, this big high-wire balancing act that we're on will continue for a little while longer. Does anybody else have any questions for Dr. Joyce that we haven't asked yet? Can we get a copy of all of this? Because I think this will be good to help us process, I know Craig can look at it, thank goodness we have you, we appreciate it, thank goodness we have you. If you all can talk some too, and we need to get probably lawyers involved to make sure that what we're doing is legal. I think we're good under the local required effort, which is the law.
Yes.
So I think we're okay there. But as far as the local required match, we got to figure out if that's even doable with the rate resources that we can identify and have available. Am I, and I don't want to speak for the whole council, am I saying something that sounds reasonable for us to continue to work on to everybody?
Yes.
Okay.
And I just want to say, your, your priorities are our priorities. I mean, we are, we are all in the same, you know, boat together, we're all under the same umbrella. So our children, literally our children, matter to us too. So it's not, sometimes there's this sense of it's us versus them, that's not what this is. We are the same, and we are in this together, we just have to make some, some short-term decisions for the greater good. And I appreciate your willingness to come up here and be very transparent about, these are things that are optional, we don't have them in, but jeez, they impact a lot of our students that really need that extra support. So I personally appreciate your approach, and I feel like you do have an idea and a sensitivity to what we're going through, and, and I appreciate that. And, like I said, just, just know that, you know, my sensitivity, I'm sure you, you caught my nerve, is because what you're saying, we've already said to people in here that we work beside as well and work so hard. And I've worked with a lot of the people in the schools that you're referring to, and they just don't get much better, and we want to retain them, obviously, just like we want to retain our police officers. So, we, we're all in this together, and together we have to just, you know, be mindful as we can.
I never did mean for it to seem like it was us versus you.
No, it's not you, it's me. Look, it's not you, it's my sensitivity because we've had these hard conversations, and so I, I pick up on that because what you're not wanting to do, I look around this room and we've already done, and
But my constituency are kids that can't see over this podium, so that's who I'm
We, we were referring about the pay increase. Yeah, yeah. And for the record, those are our kids too.
That's the one applause moment, let's, let's try not to do that, because again, I think what you're hopefully seeing here is, we're really trying hard to work this out.
Absolutely.
That everybody in the room is trying to figure out, how can we figure this out? This is not a battle, this is not, no, we don't want to do it, and we got to be pushed and all of that, so please help us get there.
Yes, sir. Thank you all very much.
But, no, I appreciate it, and, you know, I, I do think, let's continue to have this discussion. I don't know, we planned a tentative meeting for Thursday, I don't know if we'll need that meeting, or if all this can be done and we can do it next Monday, but we need to have that discussion too, and there, there's a whole lot more we got to do all evening this evening.
Sure, well
But thank you for your presentation, and thank you all, school board members, for your work on this. Carrie, thank you for your work on this, we do appreciate it, there's more work to be done. So we'll see where we go, thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay. All right, Craig, the floor is yours. So, as we, we talked, we've been working on this city budget for a long time, and there were several important things that we had to get to. Number one was to actually have a balanced budget. A few weeks ago, we didn't think we were necessarily going to be there. It's that challenging to try to get there in the environment we're in. We've all heard from folks that feel like we've got way too much in the budget that we should cut out. We've heard from others that have said, don't touch that with a 10-foot pole, we need you to preserve that. We've heard from people that said, don't touch a rate, don't touch a tax, and others that have said, why are we charging so little for everything? So pretty much you name it, we've heard it, and we've considered it all, for sure, because we don't want to leave any stone unturned in this process. So we turned it over to Craig, he has led a team, Calista has been wonderful, our entire staff and all of our department heads have been wonderful. Last Monday, we had an outstanding meeting with our department heads to really try to learn even more about each department and to talk with everybody about, are we where we can be and still function as a community? So with that said, Craig, the floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate everybody's attention this evening to the budget. As the mayor referred earlier, we've, we've been in here for a series of Monday nights, and we've got a few more to go. I'll also, just as an aside, mention that I am married to a retired elementary school teacher, so a lot of these budget discussions are at a very granular level at home sometimes, so I understand the concerns with the school system for sure. My slides are more accounting-based this evening, I don't have a lot of pretty pictures, matter of fact, I don't think this one has any pretty pictures, it's just a lot of numbers, so we'll walk through it this evening. The, all funds for fiscal year 2026, as I've mentioned on several of the meetings, a total of $77,262,257. This budget is a decrease overall from the fiscal year '25 budget, and folks may say, well, how can it be a decrease if you're looking at raising real estate taxes and some other fees and charges? One of the things, as the mayor mentioned, and you heard from council as well, is unfortunately, for the last year or two, the city's revenue projections have just not been where they needed to be. So this year, we have really tried to right-size not only the revenue projections, but also the expenses. And comments were made earlier, this has been a very painful two months with department directors and employees because we have gone round and round and round, and even as recently as a couple of weeks ago, there were, there were some concerns that we were going to be able to get this budget balanced with some of the challenges. But thanks to Calista and a lot of the work that she's done, thanks to the department directors for really making a lot of sacrifices in areas that we knew were going to be challenges, we've got a balanced budget to talk about this evening. I'll start off with the general fund, the general fund budget is $33,122,947. That's a decrease from the current year of almost $2 million, and it's a decrease from the estimate for the current year of about a million seven. So we are reducing expenditures. We are also increasing revenues, but as you can see on that top line, the revenues for this year's budget versus next year's budget are actually $2.9 million less, but that again is an issue with the revenue estimations and trying to right-size those. One of the proposals in the budget, the city, in my proposed budget to the council, I recommended a 10-cent real estate increase from 69 cents to 79 cents. When the council advertised the budget for the public hearing this evening, they advertised an 82-cent rate to give them some additional room should they decide to take that. One of the things that we looked at is, if you own a $150,000, $250,000, $350,000 home, what are the changes in the cost for, for your real estate taxes for that? Rather than go through all the lines, I'll take you down to the middle line, which if it's a $250,000 home, that would, from the current rate to the proposed rate in the budget, that would be a $250 a year increase in your real estate tax, which is about $21 a month or a little less than $5 a week. If the council this evening decided to go with the advertised rate, which is three cents higher, that would be $325 a year, $27 a month, or $6 a week. So, yes, it is an increase at 10 cents or 13, and it would be anywhere on the high end, you know, from 30 to 35, almost 40 a month, down to about 1,250 if you have a house of $150,000. And I've, I've got a summary slide at the end that I'll show you as well. The proposed rate, tax rate for the city of Radford in the proposed budget is 79 cents, this compares to the localities around us. The towns, of course, have town taxes and county taxes, so Christiansburg and Blacksburg have their own tax in addition to the 75 cents of Montgomery County, that's why Christiansburg's 89, Blacksburg's a dollar one. Dublin and Pulaski, of course, are in Pulaski County. So you can see at 79 cents So you can see at 79 cents or if the council adopted 82, which was advertised, the city rate would be higher than the two counties, but would be less than the four towns around.
Is this, I always want clarity on this. When you're looking at the rates for these other communities, is that last year's rates?
That's the...
So we are comparing what we're proposing this next year to what everyone else has done in the past.
That's correct.
Not what their current plan is.
That's correct. And I know Montgomery County's proposing a 1-cent tax increase for fiscal '26, so they'll go to, they could go to 76. I haven't seen Pulaski's proposed budget, so I don't know what they're looking at and I can't speak to any of the towns and what their rates are. But you're right, 79 cents would be fiscal '26. The other rates below that are all fiscal '25.
So let's talk about that for just a second and why that's important. Counties don't provide everything that a city provides. Towns don't provide everything a city provides, but it is closer to look at what a town and county together provides. So when you look at that additive rate, that's more in line, although it is not fully as much as the city provides than just looking at the counties or the individual towns alone. And we say that too because also what can be generated from that is significantly different. A penny on the tax in Radford is only about $122,000. That's a decent amount of money. That same penny in Montgomery County, I believe, is over a million dollars.
A million, right out of a million four now.
A million four. And so their 1-cent tax increase will generate more than our entire 13 cents if we go with the 13 cents. So just to put it into perspective, because we have struggled with these numbers trying to figure out what is fair and appropriate and acceptable and doable for Radford, and this is how Craig has helped us to get there. So I just wanted to clarify that. Please continue.
I did want to go back to this slide just a minute too, to just talk about the expenditures for the general fund. Fiscal '26 were projected at $32,883,769. That $32,883,769 reflects the reduction in funding to the public schools. It reflects eliminating a number of outside agencies that the city has funded. It reflects reducing the contribution to the New River Community College ACE program for $50,000 for a year. It removes all the capital items from the budget. We said that if there are any capital needs for the city in the upcoming year, we'll try to find a way to debt finance them, but we're not using cash for any capital. Also reflects an 8% reduction in the library budget, a reduction in the tourism budget, economic development. So there's a lot of pain that's been spread around in this general fund budget.
And I did want to talk about that, if you don't mind, the economic development piece especially, because we recognize that is such a central part of what we're trying to do to increase this pie, to increase the revenues. The manager and I had a discussion about that earlier. That is not money that will prevent us from doing further economic development. The thought process was that was money that could be used as part of the West Radford Commerce Park, any engineering or anything along that line. We have a $3.5 million grant from the state that we're able to use for that. And so Craig's thoughts were, we could eliminate that for now since that had been set aside for that. And I had some people asking me about some of these things. What are we cutting? What are we losing? And that was on my mind in particular, that I didn't want us to put ourselves in a position where we couldn't continue to grow and go from there. But please continue. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll move forward into the water wastewater fund. The water wastewater fund for fiscal year '26 is proposed at $6,594,000. The key thing in the water and wastewater fund is we are looking at an increase in water and sewer rates per 4,000 gallons from $20.32 to $24.32 for water and then $32.48 currently for wastewater to $36.48. That equates, most of our, the vast majority of our customers in the city use 4,000 gallons or less a month of water and wastewater. So that equates to about an $8, well, it is an $8 increase per month in water and sewer rates, $96 a year or a $1.85 a week for water and wastewater. Moving on to the electric fund. The electric fund budget for fiscal year 2026 is $28,867,505. That is a reduction from the current year budget. Again, there are no proposed rate increases in the proposed budget. However, I will mention, as I've shared several times, that as we continue to evaluate the cost of wholesale power, that we need to revisit that within the next 30 to 90 days to see where we are with that, to see if any adjustments need to be made as we head into the summer season. But the proposed budget does not include a rate increase at this time for the electric And that's the only slide I have on the electric fund, just the total budget. I'm sorry. For the solid waste fund, the budget is $1,734,000. That budget is slightly increased. The expense side is up by $134,790 and that's primarily due to increase in tipping fees with the New River Resource Authority, which is where the city disposes of its trash. There were some other operating expenses that came in with that as well. On the solid waste fund, we are proposing an increase in fees from $22 a month for residential solid waste collection to $25 a month. That's a $3 a month increase for a total of $36 per year or about $69 a week, excuse me, 69 cents a week. I told somebody earlier today, I'm numbers blind. I know, I'm sure Carrie and Adam are too from the school side. You look at them so long, you just don't see them anymore. There are a couple of other funds that I want to mention that the city has responsibility for. The transit fund is the Radford Transit. That budget is increasing from $28,09729 to $38,885,515. The primary reason for that increase are for the purchase of new buses, which are funded through state and federal funds. The city does not fund the purchase of those buses. We receive money from the feds and the state for those. So even though the budget's increased, the city's contribution is level. Highway maintenance fund, this is the money that we received from VDOT for maintenance of city roads. That budget is projected to be the same as, excuse me, it's slightly higher. It's $3,58,290 for fiscal '26 versus $2,995 for the current year. That's an increase of about $63,000. Those funds have to be used. They're received from the state with some local funds, but those have to be used for the maintenance and upkeep of the roads in the city. Internal services fund, this is just a fund that collects revenue from the other funds to provide for fleet maintenance and, is IT in there too? Fleet maintenance primarily. And that is $1,78,320 for the upcoming year. So in total, one of the questions I was asked was, well, what's the total impact with what's proposed in the budget right now? And of course, the difference between these three have to do with the real estate taxes. But again, using the middle one of a $250,000 home value, the total increase in taxes and utility rates would be $382 a year, $31.83 a month or about $7 a week if all the proposed increases that are currently in the budget are approved. That's just a quick summary. Again, this was for the public hearing. I know the council has heard ad nauseam on a whole lot of these numbers over the last several meetings, but just wanted to propose that, prepare that for you this evening. You also, as you get into the budget discussion, I know there's been some discussion about potential additional revenues due to the advertised rates that the council advertised with regards to various taxes. And I know there may be some discussion of that this evening. Also know there was some discussions about additional opportunities for reductions of expenditures. So we've got a lot of information to share on that as we get into the evening.
Okay. Thank you very much. And we had asked that the costs be broken down so you can see what we're actually talking about, that it's not thousands and thousands of dollars of more charges per person, per month or per year. But this is what it would look like if we go with the 13 cents. It's going to be a little bit more than that, but it's not significantly that different. Although I recognize, every dollar that we ask is a dollar that someone else can't spend on something they need or want, and we do fully recognize that completely. But we thought this was an important piece to look at because, you know, we know this is challenging for people, but also this is where we are to get to that level place and then be able to move forward from there. So having said that, we do need to go ahead with our public hearing. The first, well, we'll just open them both up. We can do them together, can't we? We don't need to do a separate public hearing for the rates and fees.
I would do a separate one for rates and fees and then one for budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Well, we will officially open the public hearing, so we will ask that you only talk about tax rates, fees and rates, which is just what we went through here, and then we'll go into budget with a second public hearing. So at this time, we will officially open the public hearing. We will ask folks to limit their comments to three minutes or less. If we have folks who still have something they want to say after their three minutes and everybody has gone through, we can do that. Jenny has a notepad. We want to be sure we get everybody's name on that. It's in the back.
It's on the podium.
It's on the podium. And please state your name for the record. Use the microphone and come down to the podium. So at this point in time, we will open the public hearing on 20/25/26, Tax Rates, Fees Anybody want to share any thoughts on tax rates, fees and rates? Okay. Seeing no one come up, we will go on and close the public hearing on Tax Rates, Fees and Rates. And at this time, we will open the fiscal 2025/26 budget public hearing. Now this, because the schools are funded through the city as well, that includes the school budget too. So if you have any comment related to budget, again, if you'll please limit your comments to three minutes or less, use the microphone, please put your name down for the record and state your name for the record as well. So we will open the public hearing on the fiscal 2025/26 budget.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Quezenberry. I'm a Radford resident and a Radford High School graduate, but what brings me here tonight is my role as a concerned parent of two RCPS students. I grew up outside of Radford City Limits in Snowville and my parents made the decision to enroll me in Radford City Schools as a tuition student during, due to the reputation that Radford had of being the best. Radford was once a sought-after school system for students and teachers, and now I really fear as though we've fallen behind and I fear that the decision to cut additional funding will set us even, back even further. Who's going to want to live in Radford and invest in Radford if our schools can't provide students with quality instruction from licensed educators? Who will want to live and invest in Radford if our schools can't fund the necessary repairs to a crumbling infrastructure? I understand that the city is facing financial hardships and drastic actions must be taken, but our schools must be protected. If the tax increase included in this year's budget does not fully fund our schools, then I am of the opinion that you must increase it or find other areas to cut. Our schools must be protected. Our children deserve better. Our teachers and school staff deserve better. If Radford City Schools fail, then families will leave. Property values will decline. Industry will not return. Making the choice to defund our schools is a race to the bottom for Radford City as a whole. I implore you to please reconsider the budget put before you and allocate 100% of the necessary funds requested by Radford City Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have comment?
Hello, my name is Lori Murphy. I would absolutely like to second what Lauren just said. We stayed in Radford specifically for the school system when our daughter was born. She is now 15. We stayed in Radford. We graduated from Radford University. We stayed. During the pandemic, we looked at moving. And our daughter asked us not to because she wanted to stay in our school systems. After the pandemic, we lost our superintendent and that was a big blow. And now, you know, just the way things are going, I'm looking about moving again. I want to move out of Radford. I want to talk more about the overall economics and, you know, just the overall budget here. A recent article stated that you guys are, it was projected 3.9 million less than what you guys thought was going to come into Radford. I do want to let you know, regular citizens, we don't see anything happening with economic development in our city. We make it a joke to drive down Main Street and count how many empty businesses there are. There are 15 right now, just on East Main, by the way. You know, and you guys won't do anything about zoning issues. You won't do anything about the people that own those buildings. There's so many empty businesses and we're overrun with services. How are we bringing money into Radford if we don't have, you know, businesses to give you guys tax? Tourism is a joke. We don't have anybody bringing people out of Radford into our city. People in Radford are leaving to eat and to shop. That's why we don't have any money. You guys aren't doing anything to help that. People are moving because of this. Like I said, like Lauren said, people won't come to Radford if our schools aren't top-notch. What else is there here? You know, you guys keep talking about cuts and how you would do anything and how you don't want the police cut. Why don't you guys give up your paychecks? Why don't you? You can be up here volunteering for the city that y'all claim to love so much for free. You could. You know, Kelly, I don't even know if your kids go to this school. They go to private school, don't they?
So I will, I will just ask, no direct...
You don't, you don't.
No direct attacks on anybody on council staff.
That's fine. I just wanted to make it clear. Show up, support your local economy, do better. That's all that we're asking.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Kate McConnell. I've been a resident of Radford since 2017. I live here with my husband Brad, who's an attorney, and my daughter is an eighth grader at Dalton. And we've had an exceptional educational experience and I would like that to continue. I will say that my concern coming out this evening does stem in large part from the News Observer article that came out last week that talked about the fact that compounded over three years, we are $9.6 million off on our projections, which makes budgeting incredibly difficult. I'm not here to lay blame for that because I don't know the mechanics that would have gone into that, but when your new wonderful welcome interim city manager says, I don't know how we got here, that sends chills down my spine as, you know, the challenges with Radford's finances are not new to us. I think the first time I spoke before council, and I'm looking for my favorite elementary school teacher, Stephanie Schell, who's in a new role, was to advocate for raises back in the day. And right now, I'm advocating for the very survival of our school system. If you've seen anything I've posted on Facebook or anything I've written in the past, I'm an educator myself. I work in higher education at a national association and so I get to see what education looks like in many different venues. I would stack the experience my daughter has had in the public schools against any Northern Virginia school, against any of the more affluent areas here, certainly against Blacksburg. Although I will tell you, my daughter has asked me specifically as she walks around a building that has been highlighted as part of a crumbling school project since 2021, should I just go to Blacksburg instead? Are my opportunities limited by being here? And I speak to her about the diversity that's here, the real life in Radford, the small schools, the personal attention, the volleyball team that she's very proud to be part of. And we're not going anywhere. But we do have options to do that. The majority of our citizens in Radford do not. I know you're going to be making incredibly tough decisions and balancing a budget is no small feat. The main role I see for a municipality is public safety and education. And I think we know within the schools, the schools also bear a significant responsibility for public safety these days. The care and feeding of the children from pre-K through senior year is not... The care and feeding of the children from pre-K through senior year is not to be underestimated. And the funding that goes into that, I think, actually contributes to a better law enforcement environment in this city. Um, my husband's a criminal defense attorney. Don't hold that against me, but I hear what happens. Uh, but I also come from a federal law enforcement family, so very pro-law enforcement. With this school and the, the situation we're in, all I'm asking is that you do your best to hold the schools as harmless as possible. I think that has to be a priority. I think that's the only way that we move forward from here and truly think of the school more creatively as foundational to economic development. I happened to meet a couple that was looking at moving here. They're from Asheville. We were talking about the damage from Helene. He's a firefighter in Roanoke. Bumped into them walking the dog in Bissett and had to be honest about our financial situation, and now they're looking elsewhere. I think that really needs to be considered.
Is there anyone else who would like to participate in the public hearing regarding
Good evening. Now, I'm Bruce Chase. I'm a professor emeritus from Radford University, and I've been in the city, um, about thirty-three years. Um, I want to start off by saying, I'm, I'm so glad that y'all are finally addressing the finances of the city of Radford. Uh, I've been concerned about that for a number of years, and I think you're all headed in the right direction. I'm a little concerned, though, you know, you're headed for a balanced budget, but you still have four million dollars outstanding on, on the general fund balance sheet. I hope that some way you can try to address that. Also, if I look at your proprietary fund statements, and I look at your current assets versus your current liabilities, you don't have enough money to pay your bills in, in the proprietary fund. You're about, um, a million dollars short. So, you know, again, you've got to look at the revenue, and you've got to look at expenditures, but I think you're headed in the right direction. Thank you.
My name's Wayne Duncan. I've lived in Radford since eighty-four. I've paid all of my taxes, and I'm kind of proud of that. I understand that the, uh, cuts in hours and staffing at the rec center and the library currently were for this current budget process. I, I think it's very painless if that can be continued to save the budget for those, um, very heavily-used city, uh, resources. That would be great. Um, I know it's kind of self-serving, but I use the, um, recycling and refuse center on where the old incinerator was. That, um, I understand that's very much in question, whether that can continue or not. Even if that continued at less than half of the hours it is, it would still be of a great deal of value to a whole lot of us in Radford. I mean, it's something I use at least once a week and very often more than that. I was at the meeting last week where the discussion of, um, hiring professionals, grant writers was discussed. I think that's a very good idea. I think that's an idea where spending a little money would bring very, uh, a great deal of returns if we did that.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to participate in the public hearing for the twenty-twenty-five,
Good evening. My name's Chris Calvi. I'm on the school board here in Radford. I'm a citizen. Um, I'm also on the president's board at New River, appointed by this board. I wasn't going to speak this evening because I have my own reasons. It was largely of faith, but I don't have a choice. We don't have truly a revenue issue. We have a communication problem. We're looking for someone to blame. We're looking for a finger to point. We say we're not, but we are. We have a political problem. We're wanting to be politicians. I don't. I'll tell everyone, I don't have a political buy-in. I don't have a dog in that hunk, because when my term's over, it's over. You're all the first ones to hear that. So what I do, every teacher, every administrator, and every student in Radford, I do that with their in mind. Forgive me, I'm, I didn't plan to speak tonight. We need to stop looking for blame. We need to stop looking for reasons to exclude each other in conversation. We need to talk to each other openly, regularly. I've been part of conversations where information was offered and then was said to be excluded from others. I have provided information, budgetary information, that didn't go to everyone. Folks, I'm asking you. I'm begging you, stop playing politics. These are our children, our future, and our city. It's about the numbers. The money's there. If we can find funding for preferred items, we can certainly find funding for required items. As already been said tonight, real estate values, safety, administration, and schools. There's your city. The rest of it is nice to have. This board started with a blank sheet of paper and built up. Guy, to your point when you ask, what else can we cut? That's why Dr. Joyce didn't understand the question, because that's not how we did it. We started from the ground and worked up. That's what we will do. I'm going to leave it at that because the time for a motion is next meeting, not this one. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to participate in the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six public hearing for the budget?
Hi, my name is Jessica McMurry. Um, I'm a teacher at McCargl Elementary School. Um, and I just want to speak for the, on the record, for the record, and I don't feel like I can speak for all the educators that are sitting in this room right now, but I have a feeling majority of them would agree with me. When we're looking at Dr. Joyce's, um, things that we really need to make our school system be as successful as it is, the teachers and the educators that are sitting in this room are not here because we're worried about the three percent raise at all. We need the things to continue to provide the level of education that these students need, for them to continue to be on the path that we are currently on. When we're looking at, um, when we're looking at assessment scores and SOL scores, we're seeing green, and green is good. And if we get rid of all of these things, we're going to go backwards. You are going to lose tuition students. You are going to lose city students. Um, I just, in my heart, I just felt like I needed to say, it's not, it's not about the three percent raise. It's about the students, for the majority of us. Um, and I just, well, I'm not going to take the full three minutes, but I just want to close by, I don't live in the city of Radford, but I have worked in the city of Radford my entire career. My heart is with these students, and my heart will remain with these students regardless of what happens here. But I implore you, please, please, do whatever you can to continue the all-in tutoring, to continue the VPI. I was a preschool teacher before I got to this point. I can't even begin to tell you the value of it. Please, do what you can so that our students can continue to, to be provided what they need to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to participate in the public hearing for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget?
I Gloria Boyd, Radford City School Board, and, and I feel like I have to speak because I'm one of them. I have been one of them. I came to work in Radford City in 2019 when our free and reduced lunch rate was about seventeen percent. And from there, I saw a drastic demographic shift with the population we served. Our teaching methods had to change. We truly needed that reduction in class size. Uh, the services that these children needed became more and more necessary for them to, uh, thrive in a school environment. Then, of course, we stirred in a little COVID, which certainly didn't help anything. And, um, when you look at national statistics, which probably are representative of Radford, and you see declining, declining reading scores, declining math scores, I, I, I am, I know that our children need every single thing we can possibly give them, every single support that we can possibly give them. And I know, I, I mean, I live in Radford, and I'm a taxpayer, and I know, I'm sympathetic to the situation we're in. I really, truly am, and I don't envy you, the job that you're having to do. But I just, um, I think that education has to be elevated above many other, um, thing, wants, desires, things. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to participate in the public hearing?
Good evening. My name is Alexandra Frye. I am here primarily as a parent, um, of some Radford City students. I actually just moved here recently in the last three years. Um, my husband, however, was a lifelong resident. Um, his grandmother, she was a hundred and four when she just passed away. She grew up on Fourth Street. I mean, like, we are very much a Radford family. It was his love of the city that caused us to come here, um, from Charlotte, but I will say that it has not been a great experience. Um, I, this and honestly where we're at with proposing these budget cuts to the school board, uh, or to the school budget is really making me question our decision to purchase a home here and enroll our students in the Radford schools. Um, we had started with Montgomery County and had people tell us what great, great schools Radford had. My husband is a graduate of these schools and loved it, um, but I'm really second-guessing all of our decisions. Um, and now I'd like to go to some prepared comments I had. Um, so again, I'm here to address the critical issue facing our community, the proposed cuts to the public school budget. As we consider the implications of these cuts, I urge you to reflect on the vital services and programs that are at risk, services that directly impact our most vulnerable populations here in Radford. First, I'd like to discuss our preschool programs. Investing in early education is investing in the future. Research consistently shows that quality preschool programs lead to better academic performance and social outcomes in later years. By cutting funding for these programs, we risk denying our youngest learners the foundation they need to thrive. This short-sighted decision could set our children back for a lifetime, widening the achievement gap and perpetuating cycles of disadvantage. And I can tell you, having come from a much larger region, there are not a lot of preschool options available. So cutting the public funding for those, it, it seems like a really, like I said, short-sighted decision. Next, I'll touch on services for at-risk youth and families that would potentially be impacted by these cuts. These programs are not merely supplementary. They are essential lifelines for many families in our community. They provide support, guidance, and resources to those who need it most. Cutting these services will not only jeopardize the stability of these families, but also increase the likelihood of negative outcomes for our youth, including higher dropout rates and increased involvement with the juvenile justice system. Finally, I'd like to talk about class size reductions for grades K through three. Studies have shown that smaller class sizes lead to better student engagement, improved economic outcomes, and more effective teaching. Our youngest students deserve the attention and support that class, smaller class sizes provide. By maintaining funding for this initiative, we ensure that our educators can focus on the individual needs of each child, fostering a love of learning from an early age. Um, and I'd also like to say, I had someone let me know that, I believe that was a twenty-five-year program that we've had in place, and so rolling it back, it seems, it'd be very hard, very hard to go back to that once we make that decision, um, to, to remove such a land's longstanding piece of our foundation in the budget. So in conclusion, the proposed budget cuts threaten to inflict irreparable harm on our community, particularly on our most vulnerable populations. Please let us work together to find solutions that prioritize education and the well-being of our children and families. We all have a responsibility to ensure that every child in Radford has the opportunity to succeed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else for the public hearing? Seeing no one else, we will go on and close the public hearing for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six budget. And, uh, Craig, do you have any comments you want to make before we wrap this portion of the meeting?
No comments this evening. Thank you.
Council members, are there any comments you all want to make before we wrap up this portion of the meeting? We will then go on and close this special meeting, and we will take a ten-minute break, and then we will come back together for our regular meeting where there will be more discussion and more work as we go forward. Thank you all very much.